This meeting is called to order at seven o'clock. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, we are being broadcast live over Van Buren Television Channel 12. It's a sad day, though, for our community. Judge Salinas has passed on Friday. He was a longtime 34th District Judge. He served from 1989 to 2003. His daughter still works at the court. The funeral is tomorrow, St. Anthony's Church, at 11 o'clock. Please, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Again, welcome, everybody. Let's begin with the roll call. Clerk Wright?
Yes. Trustee White?
Here.
Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Frazier?
Here.
Treasurer Bud?
Here.
Clerk Wright is present. Supervisor McNamara?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Next item will be approval agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Motion made by Trustee Frazier, supported by Trustee Miller. Are there any questions? Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Through the supervisor?
Treasurer Bud?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda with items Board Meeting Minutes of April the 3rd, 2018, the prepaid voucher list of April the 5th, 2018, the prepaid list of April the 12th, 2018, and the voucher list of April the 17th, 2018.
Support.
Thank you. Secuted by Trustee White. Hearing, no discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. The next item would be the public hearing. There is none. After that, we move on to correspondence. We have none. We just received it right before the meeting, and we needed a little more notice than that.
I don't see any public hearing. No, no, I know you're going to hold.
Next item after that is public comment.
I've seen public hearings. Where do I see that on this agenda? I don't see that.
There's none. There's no public hearing. Correspondence? There is none. Public comment? On public com-
Wait a minute, you're doing a-
What are you doing, Mr. Delaney?
Public comment. I'm coming and getting in line, because that's what public comment is.
Oh, okay.
If you don't know your agenda, you need to bone up on it.
But you're doing correspondence and-
No, no, he's doing public comment.
I'm doing public comment. I'm not going to slam you on correspondence.
Oh, you have an announcement? I'm sorry.
We got you doing it together.
Okay, go ahead.
Announcements are at the bottom of the top.
We do a correspondence and announcements together today.
Go ahead.
I just want to announce that the clerk office will be hosting the Belleville High School Student Council election in conjunction with the staff and the senior high school students. This year's election will be held on May 8th, 2018, in special thanks to the election source for providing equipment, coding, testing, and support. Although it is hard to believe that it will ever be spring again, I wanted to remind everyone that the motorcycle- this month is Motorcycle Awareness Month. Please be aware that we're sharing the road with you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies. I thought you were coming up for correspondence. All right, but before you start with public comment, let me just say, this public comment is on the things that are in the agenda today, which would be the one issue that we've got, which is the ethics ordinance possible violation. So, go ahead, Mr. Delaney and anybody else.
Actually, it would be corrections, Supervisor. It would be two things, because I can still comment on the way you guys changed to make this dog and pony show start by changing the policy of the meeting conduct, the way you're going to do it, with the 10 minutes and the 20 minutes.
Right.
Which doesn't seem to be fair, number one, because-
You can comment on that.
Let me finish. I'm on a roll here. I don't need any interruptions. The idea that you're going to give the accused 10, 20 minutes, but you're going to get 60 minutes to pile on, that's not right. Okay.
Sir, clock.
So, number two, I've got a whole list here, but this is going to mainly be because, Supervisor, you're the chair, and you created this situation along with some of your cohorts. But in your background letter to the board, you first stated that Township Ethics Policy Resolution 200345 required Lieutenant Bazey to report to you a charge against an elected official. That's false. It's not an elected official he's supposed to talk to you about. It's a at-will-appointed or an employee. What you've done is you've cut in pace like a 10th grader would do on a term paper, and you took the resolution, and you took the procedures manual, and you've taken things and worded them, which is item number 12 that says it gives you the authority to report to the board on any other board member. That's not true. The only thing that specifically says for item 12 is that you're supposed to, if there was bad conduct with a at-will person, or if it was a employee at large, then you would contact the board. But it was only for outside employment, is item number 12, paragraph C. What you've did is you've maneuvered and manipulated the wording around on all your charges to make them fit. But technically, your board, and we've been paying these attorneys, McCollum and Associates, which is in your packet, for 15 years for nothing, because they haven't given you any legal background when they try to tell you that that procedures and policy manual is for an elected official. It is not. Those are just fancy words that Clerk Payne and Trustee Hart threw together in 2003 to make themselves look big. That none of that holds water. And then finally, after you started this kangaroo court, then you decided, well, we need to talk to Patrick McCollum. He says, oh, by the way, you can't kick anybody off this board. You can't do squat to them. And I'll be darned if the board is going to try to censor her, that you're going to take away her powers, that 9,909 residents voted for that individual in our last election. It's 9,000 people that would have to say something, not you six, or five, or maybe four. So, there's a problem there with anything that you're going to try to do tonight to capitalize on this dog and pony show against Trustee Frazier that may or may not have a problem in another community, but it hasn't been adjudicated yet. So, how dare this board try to play lawyers and slam on anything that happened to her in Taylor that was reported on before it's adjudicated? It doesn't get adjudicated until May? So, how can you find her guilty? That is totally wrong, what you're going to continue to do today. And I want to commend Trustee Martin, because I've read your document. He's the only person on that board worth their salt, because in his document, he's claiming that you've all violated your ethics policy. You've all violated your meeting conduct policy since you've been in office. So, how dare you now want to pile on that trustee? I'm not condoning, and I'm not condemning her, but I'm protecting that seat, because I'm one of the elect- I'm one of the voters that voted her in.
Your time is up now.
Well, I thought it was 10 minutes, so what's that?
No, no, you got three and a half.
I know what it was, but if you blow it, then that's not my fault. You put 10 minutes up there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Delaney.
I'll be back under public comment.
I understand.
Non-agenda.
I believe you will.
This is a kangaroo court. Please stop before you screw it up.
Thank you. Would anybody else?
You're welcome.
Good evening, Board. My name's Adam Berg. I'm a resident of Van Buren Township. Also work for the township, but tonight I'm speaking as a resident of this township. We have a very sensitive situation here. A sensitive situation, unfortunately, that's been highlighted through the news media, through several channels, that has hurt in our community. It hurts the perception. People don't want to do contracts with people that are unethical. People are watching us, how we deal with situations. I learned about the situation, and I listened to one of the speakers in the audience. Now, I respect for him. I won't say his name. But when I learned about the situation, and I seen this speaker last meeting, who said that the board contacted the media, they're playing games. The board didn't contact the media. If anybody want to know who contacted the news, I contacted the news. And I'm proud to contact the news. The media, which we have Channel 4 here tonight, they have a role in our society. And that role is, they want to educate people on the good and the bad incidents of what the public wants to hear. Me, myself, I believe in political justice. I believe that government officials live in a glass house, and I believe that people are watching us at all times, how we do things and what we do. I think your employees are watching what is ethical, what is not ethical. Voting sets precedence. And when we vote that stealing is not an unethical decision, then therefore that could serve problems within the employees also that work here. Ms. Frazier, I worked with you on the public safety, Millish. I had a lot of faith, unfortunately, that I thought things were going to go good. Learning from the Independent, that there were two previous times of retail fraud, and now a possible third time, I ask you personally, as a leader in this community, a community advocate for this community, that you step down. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from talking while the speakers drop.
I'm not saying that she already did it. I'm not condoning against her. But if we had people working for the township, who's been vindictive? I don't think he was the only one who contacted Channel 4. I think there was somebody else behind it, sitting next to the supervisor. We shouldn't have these people working for the township. I was afraid to get up and say something, knowing that he's a police officer, because I'm worried now whether I'm going to get a ticket every time I drive through Van Buren Township. And don't shake your head, Supervisor McNamara. I know that's happened before. He should not be working for the township. He should not be working for the township. We should not have vindictive people on this board.
Please state your name for the record.
I don't see a-
No, not you.
My name is John Natman. I'm an attorney. My office is in Trenton, Michigan, 2836 West Jefferson. And I'm here on behalf of Trustee Frazier. I'm not going to get into most of the discussion that seems to be on the agenda for today right now, but I did want to raise a couple preliminary points before the board was proceeding. First of all, the police officer who just spoke doesn't have his facts right. Trustee Frazier has never, to my knowledge, been convicted of anything. And to say she has two prior retail fraud cases or convictions is inaccurate. I also want to point out that the board is considering voting on a special procedure today that they're going to immediately implement into a hearing today on a person who is being accused of something that's in court, which means she can't really defend herself, because any attorney, and I'm not her attorney on the case in Taylor, but I would say the same thing, would say, don't talk about it. So, she can't talk about it. So, it's almost like beating up on somebody who's helpless. In addition to that, this country still has a constitutional provision called innocent until proven guilty. It is something that is there as a part of our U.S. Constitution, and, most importantly, government, like you all, needs to respect that constitutional provision. There is no reason you should be proceeding today unless it's for political or personal vendetta, because you could wait until this case was resolved in the courts. Then you would have more information. Instead, you are left on the horns of this dilemma. If she is somehow convicted, you could have done it later. If she is not convicted, whatever you do today, are you going to go and take back? I think not. You're moving too quickly without any real justification for doing so. In addition, I had to prepare for two different types of hearings. One would be one with open discussion, open interchange between the board, the same kind of thing you've just handled the rest of your agenda on, and that you usually handle your agenda on. But in addition, there's a special procedure that's being proposed, which may be adopted. And if it does, that's a totally different procedure. And that means I got to be ready for that, too. But I don't know exactly what it is, because it could change before it actually gets adopted. But once again, rather than wait and let people get ready and let things happen in an appropriate timeframe, we're just going to apparently adopt a procedure and ram through.
Can you finish up?
Yes, sir. I have actually covered the points I wanted to make before we get into the meat of any of this, but I would implore you, you don't have to rush into this today. If you do, it's because you've already made up your minds without any discussion. Take your time. Wait for the courts to do what they're going to do. Then you'll have the facts. Until then, it's all just speculation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just because you are counsel, I will remind you that special procedure was presented last week in the board packet. And as a government process attorney, which I know you are, you recognize that special procedures sometimes are implemented by boards for single-issue items. This is a single-issue item. This will keep the board much more, keep the process flow much more organized. Thank you.
Supervisor?
Trustee Frazier?
I think we make a good point that I don't see how you can call this fair when you've got 60 minutes, I've got 20, and then you've got as much time as you want to discuss it in public, and I can't say anything back. How is that fair?
Let me ask your- answer your question in one second.
And the other question?
No, no, you don't have a question yet, just yet. We are still in public comment, okay? But the first order would be the discussion of the procedures. Is there anybody else that wants to make public comment here today? Last call. Okay. All right, we're moving on to the-
I'm sorry. My apologies. I looked down.
Well, I just couldn't decide whether I wanted to come before or after.
Okay.
My name's Carol Jones, and I've lived in the township for approximately seven years, as this is my first meeting I have come to. I first heard about what had happened on WJR radio in the morning, and then later on, I saw the article in the Independent that something about a storm is brewing. And it seemed to be that everybody was more concerned about who called the media and who told who on whom, rather than what this, to me, the seriousness of the allegations are. It's, I don't know, you can call it fraud, you can call it retail fraud, shoplifting. I taught my kids it was called stealing. You don't do that. I understand there's still a day in court. The other next newspaper came out, and it didn't say that Trustee Frazier had been convicted of retail fraud, larceny, but it talked about there was a, and I can't remember the exact term, it was a demand for payment that Kmart had requested a, it was some kind of demand for payment, of which I'm assume is made then, therefore there wasn't any record. As someone who's never been to the township board meeting, watched a few of them on TV, it usually gets pretty hot and heated. I just find it stunning that the concern was, apparently, the dissension between the board members here, rather than what the issue was at hand. You can't be in a bubble and think that whatever you do in your private life as a public official has nothing to do with your public life. If you're given the trust of the 9,900 voters that voted for you, I think you break the trust when you get involved with things like this. You're, and you took an oath, and you say that you're going to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and you will discharge the duties faithfully. Something along those lines. A little nervous, but I think that's something like that. And I think if you're involved in any kind of fraud in that manner, you haven't. You haven't discharged those duties. And I would ask on that, you should step down. You should step down based on that. You can't be involved in retail fraud, shoplifting, stealing, or whatever you want to call it, and then want to vote on things here that affect the whole township. I think as a trustee, as any public official, you have to be above and above all the other citizens and held to a much higher standard.
Thank you very much. Is there any other people who wish to make a public comment? Hearing, none, we're going to move on. We have no unfinished business today, so we now are into new business. We generally take a motion, and second, before we begin discussion, do I have a motion for, do I have a motion to consider the meeting conduct policy resolution, which would amend our policy and procedure to the system where each member, aside from Trustee Frazier, will get 10 minutes to state what they want to state about this case. The investigation is in front of them. Trustee Frazier will then get 20 minutes. There will be no discussion back and forth during the 10 minutes or the 20 minutes. They will get clear opportunity to speak their mind. At that time, a board will, the board will deliberate on if policies are broken and a motion will be taken. If there are mo- if there is no policies broken, this agenda item will then be complete. If there are policies that have been broken, the roll, there will be a roll call vote, and if approved, that there is a policy broken, we will go to a penalty phase. During the penalty phase, we will discuss what it is we can do in this resolution of censure or whatever. There's many things, there are not very many things we can do. Should, should, of course, the, we will not vote on this time at penalties unless there is somebody that wants to make a specific thing that has to happen quickly. And so, that would be the only reason we have a vote. Otherwise, the resolution will be presented at the next board meeting to be read and voted on. That would include the penalties. There's a lot of legal involved in this. We have gone painstakingly through this thing with legal, and the penalty phase, we want to make sure is legal. So, that's why it can't be done right here that quickly. All right, so, right now, we are at considering amendment of the meeting conduct policy, line item number one. Do I have a motion for approval? Supervisor? Trustee White?
This was placed on the table.
Are you motioning to approve?
No, no, I'm questioning the ability for us to vote on something. It was just placed on a table. The agenda that I receive is to consider if the trustee violated Township Ethic Policy 200345. This is not on the agenda. This says to consider amending the meeting conduct policy, Resolution 201305. It's not on the agenda, sir.
It is. Number one, new business. Consider amendment to the meeting conduct policy.
I don't have the, I don't have the current agenda with a amendment on it.
You, you received one.
He was set out amended on Friday.
So, Friday it was amended to include this, to, so to say that it was last week.
Excuse me, right now, wait, wait, we are on the approval section of this. Is there a motion for approval of this?
There's nothing, there was nothing in my box.
There isn't, there's not.
Okay, there's nothing in my box on this.
Trustee Miller, you make a motion for approval?
Support.
Supported by Clerk Wright? Okay, now we are in a discussion. Trustee White?
My contention is, the meeting agenda that I have and I received in the packet says to consider Township Ethics Policy Resolution 200345, but yet this was just placed on my table just a couple of minutes ago.
I have had mine since Friday.
Well, there was nothing in my box, and it was nothing given to me. This was placed on my table. Pardon?
Paul?
Trustee White, where's your iPad?
I don't know what to tell you if you're not up to, if you don't have the information. It's been given out to everybody. It's done batch. It's not done by one person or nobody else.
Oh, it's done by batch, but why was it not put in my mailbox?
I don't know. You seem to have that problem a lot.
That's not true, Supervisor.
Go ahead.
Well, for one thing, we don't put agendas in the mailbox. We send them out via email, if you want. Only reason a agenda get put in your mailbox, you request to have one printed and put in there. So, that's probably why you didn't have one in your mailbox.
Where's his iPad?
You should have iPad that we spent a lot of money on.
Is there any more discussion on this? Trustee Frazier, go ahead.
Just to say that we've had this change in policy for over a week is not accurate information. We had it since Friday, over the weekend, Monday, and tonight's Tuesday. So, we've had it well less than a week.
I contacted you last week Wednesday and told you that the proposed process would be this. Your comment back to me was that 20 minutes would be more than enough for you to respond.
And I was not under the impression that you were going to put a resolution together, nor was I informed, although you like to brag about always keeping the board members informed on everything.
Wasn't the Wednesday conversation we had on the phone, explaining this process, not keeping you informed?
It wasn't. You didn't say you were having a resolution. This was a proposal.
I said we had to set aside the rules and procedures to make a clean, to make a clean docket. We only have one issue. Otherwise, we're just going to be arguing this issue back and forth, and nobody's going to get to say what they actually want to say.
Well, what we actually have is an exclusive board that excludes certain members of the board from information and from procedures and backslaps. You have an inclusive few that you know. You told me, Supervisor, that you had four votes. So, basic, you told me when I was in the assessor's office.
Okay, yes, wait a second.
You told me you had four votes.
Let's be clear on what I said.
So, we couldn't have a special meeting.
Let's be clear on what I said. I had, one, two, three, four, I had four votes that wanted this meeting, actually, two or three weeks ago, and I've been putting it off until after the arraignment.
Nothing like a rush to judgment.
Okay. Anyway, does anybody else have any questions on the rules and procedures? Hearing, none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee White?
No.
Trustee Frazier?
No.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Treasurer Bud?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, vote yes.
Yes.
Motion paid.
We move now on. Okay. We're at our next item of the day, which is to consider if Trustee Frazier violated the Township Ethics Policy Resolution 200345 or any other township policies. I am the, since I am the supervisor, and the ethics policy calls for the supervisor to do an investigative report, I was tasked to do the ethic, to read the ethics ordinance. I obtained counsel Cosayen over there that is, that helped us out greatly. We painstakingly got legal review on everything that we are presenting here. I will read the background of this information that we have. On March 13, 2018, I was interviewed by Lieutenant Bazey of the Van Buren Police. He was investigating an assault and battery complaint filed against Trustee Frazier by Clerk Wright. This occurred following the February 20th board meeting. Clerk Wright claims that Trustee Frazier pushed him, then yelled, "Get out of my face" during the altercation. During the course of Lieutenant Bazey's investigation, he ran what's called a computerized criminal history report on Trustee Frazier. It is standard operating procedure in any investigation for reported assault and battery. It was discovered by this report that Trustee Frazier was arrested for retail fraud, second degree, from Macy's Department Store on December 31st, 2017, in the city of Taylor. Trustee Frazier in that report admitted to the theft, as stated in investigative report from the Macy's Loss Prevention Agent, and is exhibit one. Lieutenant Bazey immediately reported the charge against Trustee Frazier to me, as required by the Township Ethics Ordinance, Ethics Policy Resolution 200345. This is the first time I heard that Trustee Frazier had been arrested for the misdemeanor criminal offense of retail fraud from Macy's. Of course, I was alarmed by the nature of the offense. Further, she failed to disclose the incident to me as required by the Township Ethics Policy. On March 16th, that's three days later, I had a meeting with Trustee Frazier in my office, at which time we discussed the arrest. At this meeting, she failed to acknowledge the seriousness of the charge. I urged her to make this public. I urged her to make this public as soon as possible in a manner of her choosing. After many years in public office, I knew it was only a matter of time before details of the offense would come out. As a courtesy and out of respect for her position, I wanted to give her the opportunity to notify the public herself and to take personal responsibility. To date, she has not heeded that advice. I've subsequently disclosed this arrest incident to the other board members, which is required by me by the ethics policy. I understand that Trustee Frazier had an April 4 court date for arraignment and pretrial, and she has pled not guilty. At the March 6 board meeting, this is the board meeting that was directly after the February 20 meeting with altercation, Trustee Frazier took credit for an article that was written by, that was written about Van Buren Township in a Michigan Township Association This is exhibit three, and since it's not in any of the records, we need to play the exhibit. Can you please play the exhibit? Trustee Frazier believes that this was done in just, so you should look for it to see if you think it was done in just.
Where are we looking?
Well, you laughed and you have a big smile on your face.
I laugh a lot when I'm nervous.
And you knew that it was published by the DDA because you are the representative of the DDA.
I did not know.
And you, well, then you don't know what your directors are doing.
Watch the clip. I stated in the, in the video.
This is actually from another March, this comes out every week, and this is a publication of the Michigan Township Association.
Ally.
And every month they pick and around.
Can we wait for the video?
Yeah.
This is, actually. Ally. Comes out every week, and this is a publication of the Michigan Township Association. And every month they pick and around state for Township's in the spotlight. And I would like to note that Van Buren Township with three, four, four pictures of that, of the, one of the sculptures of the, of the monument at Quirk and Mill Road, also this day on, and beautiful sunset and a low view. And it has an article in here discussing Township, Van Buren Township, that's one of those established and a lot more things, and some of the benefits and beauties of Van Buren Township. So anyone has the opportunity, they should take this magazine and read it.
Who submitted that article and got that in MTA's text?
I don't, I do not have clue.
Did you?
That was the last.
I have no idea.
Did you?
I said I did.
Do you have a receipt?
Of course. I don't have to have a receipt. It didn't cost me a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Who submitted that article and got that in MTA's text?
I don't, I do not have clue.
Did you?
Did you? I have no idea.
Did you?
I said I did.
Do you have a receipt or proof?
I don't have to have a receipt. It didn't cost me a thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
She accepted thanks for the article. It is, it was later learned that Assistant DDA Director Lisa Lothringer was responsible for working on the article and getting it published and not Trustee Frazier. To be fair, Trustee Frazier did two weeks later state that she was just kidding. So I, it's your determination. In addition, I have received written reports from other elected officials, exhibit four, personally witnessing and confirming behavior from Trustee Frazier, which was felt to be in violation not only of the ethics policy, but the meeting conduct policy, exhibit five, as well. As stated in the ethics policy, I had a duty to inform my fellow board members of the events, which I did, both verbally and by letter on March 27. Trustee Frazier was advised of this on March 16 at the meeting in my office. The above letter, the above incidents are not the conduct expected of an elected official. Per the Van Buren Township Ethics Policy, the Board of Trustees must evaluate if Trustee Frazier is in violation of the policy. It is the board trustees that, that will determine this. They will levy a penny that is deemed appropriate if that is the determination. Trustee Frazier is accused of the following violations. The Township Ethics Policy, the public, which is the public office and employment or public trust, trust comes from requiring and maintaining integrity of the highest standard on the part of the elected and appointed officials. Whenever conduct undermines that integrity and trust, either actual or perceived confidence is jeopardized. All township officials, employees shall safeguard public confidence by being honest, fair, and respectful of persons and property, and by avoiding conduct which may tend to undermine respect for township officials and employees for the township as an institution. Where the government is based upon the consent of the governed, every citizen is entitled to have complete confidence in the integrity of his or her government. Every official of the government must help to learn and must honor that trust by his or own integrity and conduct in all official duties and actions. Also, item 13, reporting procedure for elected or appointed township officials. Conduct that may violate this policy should be reported to the township supervisor. The supervisor will decide who will investigate the report. The Township Board of Trustees will make the final decision of whether the policy has been violated. In addition, in question is violence in the workplace. Van Buren Township will not tolerate threats, threatening behavior, or acts of violence against employees, visitors, guests, or anyone. This includes physical attacks, verbal attacks, or physical threats. Physical attacks are defined within the policy as a physical attack is unwanted or hostile physical contact, such as hitting, fighting, pushing, or shoving. In summation of specific alleged violations, alleged violations, Trustee Frazier signed a receipt and acknowledged to receiving the policies and procedures manuals and agreeing to read and comply with the policies of the handbook. Number one, Trustee Frazier has committed aggressive, unwanted physical contact, pushing and shoving against another elected official on February 20, 2018. This is against violence in the workplace. Number two, Trustee Frazier has been arrested and charged with retail fraud, ergo shoplifting, related to a December 31, 2017 incidents in the city of Taylor. That is exhibit one. Number three, Trustee Frazier failed to notify the supervisor of the arrests in the retail fraud. Number four, Trustee Frazier repeatedly and dishonestly took credit at the March 6 board meeting for the creation and placement of a favorable township in the spotlight article related to the township in the Michigan Township Association publication. She basically took credit for something she didn't do. All the above, all the above conduct has the effect of undermining the integrity, trust, and confidence of the public and the township's ability to conduct business in a productive and professional manner. This ends this investigation portion. We are now going to go on and have board members speak. They have 10 minutes uninterrupted to speak. We have an order that has been placed out there, and it begins with Clerk Wright.
Okay. I'm gonna start off by going over a series of events. On November, on November the 6th, the seven board members, the board of trustees was elected by the voters of the Township of Van Buren. On November 20, a swearing in ceremony took place. On November 18, we was all administered the oath. I do something swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that of the state of Michigan, and their faith before the duties of Van Buren Township for the charter, and for the Charter Township of Van Buren County, Land, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability. At the Board of Trustees meeting on November 29, newly elected board members were encouraged to attend Michigan Township orientations for new officials and budgeting classes. On December 2, 2016, Trustee Frazier was provided a copy of all policies and procedures and a manual of Van Buren Charter Township. I file a violence in the workplace, a violence in the workplace incident report. On, on February the 20, 2018, following the Board of Trustees meeting, I attempted to speak with Miss Trustee Frazier near the entrance door of the, of trustee's room. Mrs. Frazier pushed me aside yelling "get out of my face." In addition, she bumped into Trustee Miller. I waited 20 days and hoped that Trustee Frazier would come to my office or call me and apologize. Nothing happened. Due to the nature of her behavior, combined with the ongoing personal attacks, I then went to the HR department where I was encouraged to file an incident report. I was told if you don't file a report, nothing happened, and it doesn't. In regards to our violence in the workplace policy, if a report is not filed, it not, it is no incident. I filed a violence in the workplace policy with the Van Buren Publics, Police Department on March 13, 2018. In today's society, incidents of violence has become a commonplace. It's my responsibility to protect, protect our employees and according with our violence in the workplace policies and the public and make sure records of such behaviors are recorded. I believe these actions are in violation of, of the Township Violence, Violence in the Workplace Policy. Specific examples of conduct which may be considered threats or acts of violence include, but not limited to the following, hitting or shoving of individuals. Ethics. Ethics is a huge word. It can be determined in all types of ways. It can be carried on in all type of ways. It can be deemed to be received in all type of ways. In 2014, just example, in 2014, the township create, created a strategic plan. In the plan, I was selected to champion the township branding effort. As many residents had approached me with concern that they was unable to use the Van Buren Township as their residence on their mill or their driving laser. So I contacted US Postal Service Management Division and was advised on the process to make correction. This correction took place several months and was necessary prior to move forward in our branding of our community and attracting new business and development. Announcements were made to the public starting December 5 and notice published in the papers of record. At a Board of Trustees meeting February the 20, 2018, Trustee Frazier expressed her displeasure with the process, stated it was not part of the strategic, strategic plan, and was never given a copy of it. Contrary to what she said, Trustee Miller had emailed a strategic plan in this entirely to the entire board on March 2, 2017, almost a year prior to her insistence that she never was given a copy. Again, as stated, MTA Focus Magazine, March 6, 2018, Trustee Frazier took credit for Michigan Township Focus Magazine article highlighting Van Buren Township. On March 20, 2018, Trustee Frazier publicly apologized for taking credit for the article highlighting Van Buren Township and stating it was a joke. Retail fraud, on March 28, 2018, I received a copy of investigation of Trustee Frazier indicating that on December 31, 2017, Trustee Frazier was arrested by the Taylor, City of Taylor for retail fraud, second degree, occurred at Macy's in South Lamont. Her state, her statement in, in the report was, that Trustee Frazier admitted to the theft, to the theft. Trustee Frazier failed to report her arrest to the supervisor. I believe these actions are in violation of Township Ethic Policy. The Township Ethic Policy clearly indicates in the responsibilities of public office that township officials and, and employees are bound to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Michigan and carry out with, impartially and comply with the laws of the state of the nation. State of the Charter Township of Van Buren, township officials and employees must not exceed their authority or breach the law or ask others to do so. Township officials and employees are bound to observe them in their official acts as the highest standards of morality and to discharge the duties of their office faithfully, regardless of personal consideration, recognize that their conduct in both their official and private affair should be above reproach. All township officials and employees shall safeguard public confidence by being honest, fair, and respectful to all person and property to whom they have contact, by maintaining a non-partnership in all official acts, and by avoiding conduct which may lead, who may tend to undermine respect for the township officials and employees and for the township as an institution. Further, when government is biased on the consent of the governed, every citizen is entitled to have complete confidence and integrity of his or her government. Reporting procedure for elected or appointed township officials, but not township employees, conduct that may violate this policy should be reported to the township supervisor. In regards to everything that I just stated, there's no way that this can't be deemed a violation of our Township ethnic policy. And I hear, I hear everything that's been said. Attorney, I recognize what you were saying regarding her right in court. We are not in court. And I've said all along, we're disconnect, this is, this instance is disconnected from what the law determines. I have no regards to what Taylor perceives when they, in the, in the law of court. My issue is to our ethnic policy and has it been violated or not? In my eyesight, it has been violated. I've seen much less than this cause much more uproar in this community than what we're seeing right now. This is my 10th year in our office and there's a lot, people sitting in this, in this arena has witnessed a lot of things that cause a lot more content than what we're looking at right now. And I guarantee you that if, if I was sitting in these shoes, we wouldn't be talking this easily. It's just the idea of what we look at as perceived or how we reckon, how we recognize and eyes of behold and the eyes of constituents. I also have an article, I made the, I made the, I made the, the report violence in the workplace because I feel like it had to be documented. And if you, anybody read the newspaper, March 8, Beverly Area Independent, Trustee Frazier admitted that she shoved me because she thought that someone said that she hit me. It's admitted in the paper that she, she pushed me aside. What pushing me aside, the shoving, hitting, whatever, is unwarranted when it's not asked for, and it shouldn't be any procedures, it shouldn't be the acts of a public official at a public meeting. We should be of utmost respect when we're in the, in the public meetings with each other and to the public. I can't help but see this as an act of, of violation of our ethnic policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please. All right. Treasurer Bud, please.
Unfortunately, this board has been put in a position that has been very hard on all of us. We've already talked about her taking credit for the magazine article that was an MTA. I cannot understand why, when she knew she hadn't done it, she continued to claim that she did. The week before, she had asked Sean to call her, that who is my deputy, and she was reminded that all requests for information had to go through the supervisor's office. She came to the counter and she was yelling at my staff and deputies, saying they didn't get the message right, and she was upset. Another employee who happened to walk behind her was very embarrassed for her actions and mentioned it to me. The next day, Sherry came and asked me what the problem was. I told her what had happened and we had it worked out. The next day, one of my employees said she was very intimidated when Sherry comes to the counter. It always seems at board meetings she has to have the first and last word and gets irritated easily as she continues to raise her voice and really talks over most board members and doesn't show much respect. When the board was made aware of the shoplifting charges, it felt, it felt, most felt they didn't know why and how that had to do with her pledge to support the laws of the land as elected official. Her, her example has me very concerned about what we are telling other employees and the community about what is right and wrong. For all the years in education, I hope she was always telling our children what was right or wrong, and that's my concern. I do believe that her lying, her shoplifting, her bullying attitude, and disrespect for others violates the ethnic policy of Van Buren Township.
Thank you. Please. Trustee Martin.
Honorable board members, employees, and residents.
Please.
Honorable Board Members, Employees, and Residents, we as elected officials are expected to conduct ourselves in a certain manner when we are representing the Township. As per the oath of office that we swore in November of 2016, we are bound to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the State of Michigan and to comply with the ordinances, policies, and procedures of the Charter Township of Van Buren. Also, we should recognize that our conduct in both our official and private affairs should be above reproach as our behavior has the possibility of impacting the reputation and/or renown of the Township. The allegations regarding physical assault and a pending criminal matter remain in fact just allegations. The singular question before us tonight, as I see it, is did Trustee Frazier violate the Van Buren Township Ethics Policy by not reporting her arrest for retail fraud to Supervisor McNamara close in time to when it occurred on December 31, 2017? Allegedly assaulting Clerk Wright and taking credit for an article written and submitted by someone else? I read the section of the Ethics Policy cited in the documents provided by Supervisor McNamara, and given the facts presented at this time, I cannot say that she did. I want to hear from every member of the board and any citizen who wishes to comment before I make a decision or take any vote on how the board should proceed. Trustee Frazier, please know that I have struggled over what to say tonight regarding the sole issue of our agenda. I know that a part of my job as trustee is doing what is best for the Township by trying to keep the seven of us speaking in a singular and sure voice for the betterment of the Township. My struggle is that I have watched your behavior over the last seventeen months and wondered what has motivated your actions in interacting with us, Township employees and residents. Our relationship started with you flipping over my nameplate because you were unhappy with the seat assignments. I have watched your regular and ongoing personal attacks on Clerk Wright and heard the reports of intimidation of staff. The alleged assault on Clerk Wright and the pending criminal matter are the loudest signals to us that you are struggling with something. We want to help you and provide whatever support, assistance, and guidance that you need, if only you would ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Miller.
I'm going to read my statement here as to what I was asked to add to this conversation. At the March 6 board meeting, Paul White announced that in a recent MTA publication, a very nice article was written about the Township. And when I asked who was responsible for getting this article published, Sherry Frazier spoke up and said she did it. She also went on to say the article was free to publish. I then verbally thanked Sherry for her work on the article. At no time during this conversation did I believe that Sherry Frazier was joking, and I took her actions as being sincere. At the end of the meeting in the Township Hall, I learned that Sherry Frazier did not have anything to do with the article getting published. In fact, I was told it was Lisa Lothringer who is responsible for working on the article and getting this piece published. In fact, Lisa had made mention of working on this article through a correspondence to the board in prior months. Because of Sherry Frazier's actions regarding this incident, I believe that Sherry Frazier demonstrated irrational behavior and unethical self-control of a public official. Second point, on March 16, I met with Lieutenant Charles Vazey and Kevin McNamara in the supervisor's office, in which they told me that on December 31, Trustee Frazier was arrested and charged with shoplifting at Macy's Department Store in Taylor, Michigan. I believe that holding public office is a position of public trust. We are held above and beyond reproach. We're to set a level of integrity. We need to set morals and standards for our youth. What message does this send to the public? That it's okay to shoplift? There wasn't one item that she was found with. It was based on six items: two pairs of earrings, two scarves, a shawl, a planner, in two different locations. And this was documented, and I read the report. And I also saw where Ms. Frazier said that she admitted to it. So it was based on this that I believe a violation of breach of duty of care occurred because she did not uphold her duties to the community in which Trustee Frazier serves. Her decisions and actions of committing the immoral act of shoplifting lacked sound judgment to me, and she did not hold herself accountable to a higher standard of integrity. I therefore feel that Sherry Frazier committed misconduct in office. This has been one of the hardest two weeks ever of being a board member here. I respect Sherry Frazier, I respect her position, but it's not okay to steal, ever. And when you're an elected official, you're in the public light. Your actions have consequences because we're to set an example for our public. It's not okay to steal. We're not in court, this isn't court, like, I'm sorry, like Leon Wright said, this is to convict her of this. But she admitted in documents that she committed this act. So that's what I based my statement on, was what I had, standard of care. So it's been awful for this board. I support Sherry Frazier's position, but I don't support shoplifting. And as far as the violence in the workplace, I have to add that I did not see Ms. Frazier push Leon Wright. I stated that verbally. She put her arm out that evening, and actually, she pushed me. It wasn't intentional, it was an automality where she shoved me, that wasn't the case. So I do have to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Miller. Please. Trustee White.
I take a little bit of a different position on this than most of the rest of the board because my position is, in the United States of America, you're always innocent until you are proven guilty. And I strongly believe in that, and I'll always believe in that. I think that this is premature. The court case is simply an allegation at this point, and I do not think that this board should be sitting in judgment of Trustee Frazier at this point in time as violation of the Ethics Policy because everything at this time is strictly an allegation. And again, I'll state, you know, in the United States, we are always innocent until we're proven guilty. Even people who commit murder are innocent until they're proven guilty. And that's the way that it should be. The charges that were against her, and almost everyone in this room and in the audience know and understand that Trustee Frazier is very outspoken, she is not afraid to challenge any person on this board, and it happens often, and it creates a lot of angst with some of them when she, you know, challenges them to bring forth other things. You know, I have a question. We all know that if we go to court, you have a jury sitting there. And if that jury votes five to one in a six-person jury, or eleven to one on a twelve-man jury, you know, there's no conviction. You've got to have a majority. I disagree with unanimous, a unanimous decision versus a majority position. And when you're conducting something like this, that is very, very dire in the situation and how everything happened and how everything came down. And I'd also like to note that Clerk Wright did withdraw his charges after the CCH was pulled by the Police Department.
I haven't withdrawn anything. We have filed charges, I filed a, yes, the harassment in the workplace is different between filing assault charges, criminal charges.
Well, you dropped your complaint.
But he's got to say the truth, though. No, I did not.
Well, that's the way the statement was, that we read it. And I also understand that this board is supposed to decide a penalty. You know, I can read nothing in the policy that states that there should be a penalty, okay, that the board makes the decision. If that policy was written correctly, then a penalty would be spelled out in the policy, and it would let us know that, hey, look, here's what the penalty is going to be. Not for us to sit here with the seven of us or the six of us and say, well, we're going to make up a penalty, blah, 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 blah. That is not the correct way to do things. It is improper and just not, it's in violation of the honesty and the ethics for us to create a penalty against a trustee. And as I stated, you know, there's absolutely nothing in the policy about a set penalty that for such and such a procedure, this will be the penalty, or that'll be the penalty, or anything else. The penalty in this case, as far as I'm concerned, is the residents. It's up to the residents to determine the penalty. We work for the residents. I've always stated that. Every decision I make, I try to make it in favor of the residents and how it will benefit them and their lifestyle and their pocketbook. And we need to always remember that that's who we work for. We don't work for each other, we try to work together, doesn't always happen because when you have seven people sitting on the table, they're not always going to agree with everything. And I'll just go back and restate my case as far as you're always innocent until you're proven guilty. And this has not been adjudicated in a court of law yet, and it will be, and I think that we should wait until after that happens to make a decision. I'm done.
Thank you, Trustee White. My turn. I want to begin by apologizing to the community. We shouldn't even be here to begin with. It's regrettable that our sole item on the agenda tonight is to determine if a trustee is in violation of the Ethics Policy. I will reiterate that we would not be here if the trustee had taken my advice and apologized to the community, accepted personal responsibility, taken some time off, and got some help. In an effort to avoid this personal responsibility, she has dragged this entire community through this embarrassing process. While investigating this issue, I could find no other community that has gone through a hearing like this. It is because when a trustee has these issues in other communities, they apologize, they accept personal responsibility for their actions, they step down, or they get help. This saves the community from the embarrassment of a hearing like this. Trustee Frazier's tenure as trustee began poorly with an argument at our very first meeting, very first meeting over her seating assignment. It ended with her pushing another trustee's nameplate across the desk at the trustee and stomping off. Because of this, we actually decided we needed to spend some money, and we spent thousands of dollars trying to get the trustee and the whole board to work together by bringing them together, bringing team-building experts in and having board workshops. But her behavior has grown steadily more and more abusive. This has been extenuated since January, time of the Macy's incident. And I can't help but think that there may be some correlation between that Macy's incident and her behavior escalating. Since this time, her actions have become so erratic, both on the board and off the board, that all but one board member has come to me worried about her. And they are also worried about their own personal safety around the trustee. Every one of them have been worried about their personal safety. After numerous private discussions with the trustee, I determined that I needed to start documenting these instances. I sent her a private letter on February 22 explaining that her behavior toward board members and employees would not quietly be tolerated any longer. In the letter, I wrote, I write regarding the abusive environment she is creating around her, and I will read an excerpt from the letter. This is before discovering Macy's. From the letter, from this letter, I wrote, "I have just learned that you recently lambasted the entire treasurer's office for a perceived slight. That slight is that they will give you any information you require, but only through proper channels, as they are part of a growing list of employees that don't want to deal with your unprofessionalism. You are way out of bounds as a trustee when you publicly scream at and humiliate whole departments of employees. To make matters worse, you just attended a class that was mandatory for all employees the day before, and that class's title was 'Respect in the Workplace.' In addition, I have been told that you were pushing aggressively other board members last night after our board meeting. I can't believe I have to say this, you can't hit board members. Actions have consequences. Van Buren fosters a respectful work environment. It is good business, and workplaces that foster an abusive workplace get rightfully sued. Your actions have left me with no other option but to send you this letter demanding you cease this behavior to your colleagues and the employees of Van Buren. I thought this would end this. It didn't. Your attitude of behavior became even worse. At the next boarding meeting, she took credit for another person's work. After this meeting, heated arguments broke out. Trustees were yelling at me to get her out of the room, another was yelling at her to get out of their face. Another discovered she had lied about the article, and Trustee Frazier moved so aggressively at Treasurer Bud that an employee stepped in front of her and refused to let her pass in attempt to keep the trustee Frazier from being run over. This led to Clerk Wright to determine that he needed to document the trustee's behavior also. It was the same conclusion I had two weeks earlier. Unknown to me, he contacted the police to document the pushing issue. The Charter Township Act allows Townships to determine their own rules. Further pursuant to MCL 42.7, quote, "A member of the board who refuses to conduct themselves in an orderly manner is guilty of misconduct in office." Unfortunately, I cannot find where Van Buren Township has ever set a board conduct policy on its own members. They never needed one. So I cannot support misconduct in office as a charge against Trustee Frazier. But it is important to note that this is the catalyst, this is the catalyst that led to the investigation which was started by Clerk Wright, which discovered the Macy's shoplifting issue. So to the four other counts, one, committing aggressive, unwanted, physical conduct, pushing and shoving against another elected official. When I was first told of this, I was told it was Trustee Frazier pushing Clerk Wright and Trustee Miller. Trustee Miller feels her push was an accident. No one but Clerk Wright, Trustee Frazier witnessed the Clerk Wright push. Trustee Frazier wrote that she did not touch him. For that reason, I felt there was not enough evidence to consider that a violation. That was until I saw her quote in the Bellevue Independent where Trustee Frazier changed her story and stated that she did push him on the shoulder. So now I have two people that agree there was an incident and there was a pushing. I therefore have no choice but to believe Clerk Wright's statement that has been consistent and unchanging since that day, unlike the trustees, who has had now two stories that I know of. I believe she did do this and should be held accountable under the violence in the workplace policy. Number two, repeatedly and dishonestly taking credit for others' work in preparing an article on Van Buren Township for the Michigan Township Association Magazine. I have watched that video clip a dozen times. I do not believe she was joking. She takes credit for it once, and then when questioned, she takes credit for it again. And finally, when confronted by Treasurer Bud as to whether she really did do this article, Trustee Frazier became indignant and stated she did it, and it didn't cost her anything. I believe this is a violation of the Ethics Policy. Number three, failing to notify the supervisor about a possible breach of the Ethics Policy, namely the shoplifting charge. I will not speak this much. She did not notify me. I assume she didn't want anyone to know about this. I guess I can understand it. This is probably the least of the issues that we've got in front of us, but technically she did breach this portion of the Ethics Ordinance. Number four, engaging in conduct on December 31, 2017 that led to her being charged with retail fraud in the city of Taylor. I truly believe the trustee has an issue that requires help. Things have not been great with her behavior on the board and to the employees, but they have gotten worst since the first of the year. The police report, however, is obvious. She hid multiple items from multiple places in the store, she walked by ten cashier areas on the way out the door, she admitted that she stole the items. I believe that this is a clear violation of the Ethics Policy and a violation of our public trust. In closing, this behavior is not what this board condones. A board member should be held to a higher standard of ethics. It has pained me to write this down and deliver this to you today, and I really am sorry it came to this. I can only hope we can someday repair this trust with the public, but it must start with this board showing that it will not tolerate behavior that creates mistrust. Thank you. We are now at Trustee Frazier for twenty minutes.
Well, I've really been dumped on, and allegation after allegation. Let me start with Mr. Clerk Wright's accusations that... Let me start with Mr. Clerk Wright's accusations that I pushed him. There were four of us walking through that door. It was Kevin Martin, Clerk Wright, myself, and Reggie Miller following me. The supervisor was standing down here. Abruptly, Clerk Wright turned around and was right in my face, and I said, "Please get out of my face." And when he did not respond, I turned and brushed trustee Miller and exited this way down the steps. There are two, two different accounts of Clerk Wright's, uh, report. One on the statement that he made, and then another to Lieutenant Bazey. It seems rather coincidental, and I have begun an, um, investigation with the Michigan State Police regarding who has run liens against me. I would just like to point out that Adam Byrd, I live, um, on the service drive, and I called the township regarding two large dogs that are next door to me, but there's a privacy fence, and I kept hearing one of them cry out. I was not, uh, privy to go over there myself, so I called the police department and wanted them to investigate the dog's barking. Adam Byrd pulls up in my driveway, and he starts asking me, "What's my birth date? What's my middle initial?" And I said, "What, what are you doing?" I said, "Why are you running the report on me?" It was because it was right before, prior to the election, and Adam Byrd doesn't like me, and he has made that clear on other occasions, because he does things on his job that probably are not allowed, and he has an interest in a company that the township does business with. And I'm not sure at this point if he actually, um, divulges that in the workplace. Okay, so that's, that's the first. I, wouldn't surprise me that he was the one that called Channel 4 to get the report. Because when you're a strong person and an outspoken person, you make people either, either like what you're doing or they don't like what you're doing. And obviously, I, I thought I got along fine with most board members up until just a few weeks ago, when this whole thing occurred. I regret deeply that I find myself in this situation, but this whole thing is nothing but a rush to judgment. I was advised by my attorney not to bring up or speak on the incident at Macy's until I had gone to trial. I was informed by him, "Do not bring it to the supervisor. Do not bring it out until you go to court." I adhered to my attorney's advice. I believe Supervisor McNamara that I told you specifically that I intended to bring it to your attention after I had my court date. You dismissed that because for some reason, the vindictiveness here is, is quite obvious. I don't think I have to point it out with the words in the allegations that have been made. You saying that I took credit for the article? I did, but it was, I think that trustee White, um, understood that I was being facetious. I have a tendency to, um, to joke about things. And I knew that there were two people, I was pretty sure, sitting at this board table who knew very well who published the article. Ms. Bud and the supervisor himself, who is, is a member of the DDA and is responsible for knowing what the DDA is doing. So I thought that, okay, you can't interrupt. You, you should have known that that article had been submitted to the township, to the Michigan, um, Association. You should have been informed of that as being the direct, director over that. I also want to say that Clerk Wright's accusations of assault that happened on February 20th was not brought forward until almost two weeks later. And that's because there were some Taylor and Van Buren police target shooting at Top Gun in a competition, and one told the other one, and then the other one said, went to Ms. Clerk Wright and said, "Hey, we got something on Frazier. File assault and battery charge against her, even though our policy calls for the re, uh, workplace, uh, violence to be reported immediately, immediately. That's what the policy says." Clerk Wright.
One comment real fast.
Clerk Wright.
Okay.
Actually, no, you're, you're even a third time.
Oh, that's okay, because I'll be 30 seconds.
So Clerk Wright waited, waited to do it, and he did not follow the rules. He, Clerk Wright has a tendency not to follow the rules. It says, "The case was closed. This report is for documentation purposes only." Clerk Wright does not want to follow through with prosecution of this matter. This is from the police report conducted by Lieutenant Bazey. Lieutenant Bazey told me that there was absolutely no credence to Clerk Wright's allegations against me, and the prosecutor would not even entertain a, a thing like that. And so it was a waste of taxpayers' dollars. Clerk Wright is upset with me because I have called attention to his spending on conferences out of the country, where it has been known that he takes his wife with him, which is perfectly fine, but you must pay your wife's way ahead of time. There was a voucher in the voucher list that said one meal costs $103. It caught my attention, and so I requested from Clerk Wright, "Will, how, you ate $103 worth of food for one meal? Because you're always so toned and fit." And he admitted that, yes, I had my wife with me, and it was for both of us. He likes to brag that he's a 10-year seasoned elected official who knows, who should know that if he's a seasoned official, he should know that when a, a mate, uh, when a waiter comes to your table, you shouldn't pull out the township credit card to pay for both meals, but that you should say, "We need separate checks. I will be paying for mine and she will be paying for hers." It was only after I brought this issue to the attention, Supervisor McNamara says he looks at the voucher list, but no questions asked by him. Treasurer Bud, who pays the actual voucher list, no questions asked by her. No questions asked when Clerk Wright obviously paid for, with the township credit card, his passport, for his passport to go to Montreal. No questions there by anybody except myself. And I think trustee Miller and trustee White thought it was unusual for the township to pay for a form of ID. Again, a seasoned official spending taxpayers' money incorrectly. It was only after four months of reminding Mr. Clerk Wright that he should pay the bills back, that he finally would not produce a receipt to us. He came and laughed at me and said, "I paid for it." And I said, "You did? Give us the receipt." We, I didn't see it in the, when Clerk White paid for his meals, it showed up on the voucher list. Nowhere on the voucher list did it say Clerk Wright reimbursed township this amount of money. Nowhere. And he just cut, he, he laughed at me and said, "Well, you don't know how to find the information." But I believe the newspaper went forth and filed a freedom of information, and they finally, you finally produced the receipts, and you did not repay the full amount. A, so, you know, I don't know what's going on here. I, I think there's things that are going on that are, you want to say that you're, you're stealing from, as far as I'm concerned, from the township coffers. You would have got away with that and let it slide if nobody would have brought it up. Supervisor McNamara and Treasurer Bud are cohorts in letting you do whatever you want, fly out of the country, attend wherever, go out of the state for conferences. I'm all for education. I served on the school board for 16 years, proudly. I, I commended you on getting your, uh, your conference credits and all that. I believe I gave you a framed picture to put up in your office. To say that I don't appreciate your efforts is totally incorrect, and portraying me in that light is totally incorrect. And Supervisor McNamara, I am really, you know, disappointed in your, your demeanor and your lambasting me. You act like, and I'm sorry to say this, but at the township, um, state of the township meeting in front of the Chamber of Commerce, you showed one picture of the trustees, a bad picture at that, but yet you highlighted Clerk Wright's picture as a man of the year on Time Magazine, and you had a caricature of Ms. Bud dancing and saying how happy she was. I left with the impression that, gee, do we really need a board here? Is it really seven people with all equal votes that make the decisions in Van Buren Township? Or is it just Supervisor McNamara, coached by Treasurer Bud, who runs the township? And if you don't know that, you do now. Um, and Clerk Wright, who just, they just say to him, "Oh, it's okay. Whatever you want to do, it's, it's no problem. It's no problem. If you want to go out and pay for your wife on the township credit card, go right ahead. We're going to overlook that." It's, and the whole thing about the treasurers going to the treasurer counter that day, I had just got out of class with Sean Bellingham, who was in my class. I got to the treasurer's, uh, desk. I asked if Sherri Bud was in, and they said, "No." And I said, "Well, is Sean, is Sean in? Because I need to talk to him." And they said, "No, he's gone to lunch." I nicely said, "Well, listen, could you give Sean, I'm going to give you my personal cell number because I have a question I need to ask him. You can have him call me whenever it's convenient for him after work." That was it. 20 minutes later, I get a accusatory phone call from Supervisor McNamara, deeming that I go through proper channels to get any information regarding the township. And I said, "What are you talking about?" Supervisor McNamara told me, "Well, you know who put in the complaint." I said, "So you can't say her name?" He said, "No, I can't, but we know who put in the complaint against me. It was Treasurer Bud." I simply wanted to talk to Sean Bellingham about a, who he uses to clean his septic. It was a totally private matter. I am a realtor. I have a property that has 10 acres and a home on it, and we needed to get the septic cleaned. And I wanted simply to know who he uses or would recommend in that area. Simple. I go into the, I go into Ms. Bud's office the next day, and I said, "Sherri, what's the deal? Why did I get a call from McNamara?" And she says, "I didn't tell McNamara. I told, I told Matt Best." That's exactly what she said. And then in the statement she wrote, she said she would have to go through Dan Selman.
You have three minutes, and I think your attorney might want some of that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I wasn't going to cut you.
No, go ahead.
You were doing a good job, although you did steal some of my lines.
Oh, okay.
Um, I know most of you don't have a lot of knowledge about me. I will tell you by way of brief background that I worked in government for 25 years. Uh, I was in the prosecutor's office for half that time. I was in the administrative side of the county for half that time. I remember when Mr. McNamara first got elected. Uh, I remember when he is back in the Schoolcraft, uh, school board. Um, and we've always gotten along well, and I've always had tremendous respect for him. My background does allow me to get some perspective on what's going on, and I also, by the way, was on the township board in Brownstown for a period of time, and I've been involved in politics and elected government for 30 years. I will tell you that a couple things that need to be pointed out. First of all, if I have a client who is accused of shoplifting and I want a copy of the police report, I need to go to court and get an order from a judge. If I try, like the Channel 4 might do, to use the FOIA process, it comes heavily redacted by the police department. Somehow, a copy of the Taylor police report not only was obtained, but then was distributed to the public free of charge. That's a violation. That should not have happened, and the only purpose in doing it is to embarrass the trustee. The idea that the, that the officer just happened to run a lien because he is investigating a criminal case, which apparently was not filed, um, is, just doesn't make sense. I'd give you one of two alternative theories, one of which is the police officers from Taylor talked to the police officers from Van Buren, which happens, or alternately, the same law firm does criminal prosecutions in Taylor and represents the township. Now, they quite properly recuse themselves from the case in Taylor. There is another firm that also does prosecutions there, and they're handling that matter. So I'm not accusing the, the law firm of doing anything improper. I will point out that you've already spoke about the large, intensive legal work needed to be done for that, and I got to ask why? Why spend all this money? Ms. Bud had, or Ms. Frazier had to do her own spending. I will point out that here is your policy. It's kind of thick. Trees died for, yes, sir. Trees died. Trees died for this. There is one sentence that vaguely says elected officials and employees have to uphold the law. There's been no allegations of a failure to uphold the law. They've been proven. They're still pending. You got two choices. One, you can hold this off until after anything is done, and if there's a conviction, proceed appropriately. Alternately, quit pretending you're basing it on facts like this. Just go ahead and say in your resolution, "We don't like her, and we want to reprimand her." Don't pretend it's based on facts when nobody can determine what the facts are yet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we now move into the deliberation section. In this, this section, trustee Frazier has a conflict of interest, so she's not involved with this. Six other, uh, the six other board members are. Currently, we basically have, get the same right here. We have four issues, I believe, that we are looking at. First is committing aggressive unwanted physical contact. The second is engaging in conduct that led to her being charged with retail fraud. The third is failing to notify the supervisor, and the second is taking credit, or the fourth is taking credit for the township article. Does anybody want to speak to any one of these items?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Since I happen to be the topic of the conversation tonight, I feel like I need to say something more. I'll, I'll speak again that none, all this probably would've flew under the radar if only trustee Frazier would've had a little humility and came to my office and apologized. If you pushing me was a, was simply an incident, then why not apologize? So if you would've came to my, I gave you twenty days to apologize.
I didn't push you, Clerk Wright.
She don't, she don't do, she don't engage in this. What you, your, your, your.
Don't look over there.
Your incident of how things happened is completely false. I was standing in the door, talking to trustee Martin. You was in the trustee's room. You came storming out. You, I was standing in the door. You pushed me aside. You stormed down the, you can't walk here. You abrupty, you abrupt trustee Frazier. I would, I didn't bump to a whatever. I have a lot of things on my bucket list. Accusing seventy year, sixty-nine year old people of pushing me is not one of them. I've never done something like that. The only reason I did this was to document it in regards to our policy, that I think it's important that it be documented. I don't know what you're talking about in regards to the Taylor police. I know, I know, I don't know any Taylor police. So I don't know what you're talking about regarding that. The only reason why this has been the alleged, well, you wanna say alleged shoplifting, it was brought forward was because of my report that I did with the police department. I don't know who told anyone that I have withdrew anything. I haven't walked into the police department and withdrawn anything. We have police department. I don't care what's in your paper. I haven't withdrawn anything. I didn't file, I didn't file a criminal. I don't want, I told them I didn't want to file charges against her because that wasn't my, that wasn't the intent in the beginning. My intent wasn't to file charges. I didn't want to hurt her. I just wanted to document the incident. Because I documented incident which brought, transpired more things. It's not my problem. You're trying to put something, you're trying to blame me for issues that you have and things that you've done. I have nothing to do with what happened in, in December two thousand seventeen. That's not my problem. Because this came to light because of what I said, it's not my fault. And because I don't have, I don't have an issue with you, your, your, your accusatorious, or you're questioning me regarding expenses, as long as it's done proper and by protocol. The problem is that you don't know the process. You didn't take time to learn the process. You don't take time to learn the policy. You never asked anyone how the policies go. You don't know how, you didn't ask anyone how reimbursements are done. If anybody, if you would've read the policy, you know reimbursements were done strictly and properly. If you were, if you reach a budget, you know that everything that I did was, it's in my budget. I never follow, go outside my budget. I oversee it for budgets, that's a, it's a hundred thousand dollars short of a million dollars. This is my tenth year in office. Yeah, I feel that, I hold myself in high credibility because I've never went over budget. I, I come in line every day, every year, in, in budget. We get, we get audited every year. I never had an unfavorable audit, audit in ten years. Yeah, I do hold myself as, for, in, in high respect for what I do, and I try to do things that's gonna remove the township forward. So if you could, I don't have any, never, I told you, I never have any issue with anybody asking me a question, as long as you ask me the question professionally and in respect and in accordance to the policy. You're not gonna talk to me in a, in a derogatory manner. You're not gonna bump me. You're not gonna disrespect my, my title. You're not gonna disrespect my office. And if you wanted, if you do that in line with what I just stated, I have no problem. You can ask me questions all day long because I don't do anything that's out of the ordinary. These are your accusations of me. It's, it's obvious because I'm the, I'm the person over, this is your first year in office. I've been in office, this is my tenth year. And you come in, and I guess your, the intent was to attack Clerk Wright. Because every, twenty, fifteen minutes of your twenty minutes tonight speaking was against, was on me. That's fine. I don't, I, I can, I can handle your accusations, but I'm not gonna take your insults and your disrespect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Treasurer Bud.
I did not know who had put that article in the paper at that board meeting. We got a text from the director through one of the other directors, who came up and showed it to me and let me know that Lisa was the one that had put it in there. So I just notified the board before they left the building that it was not Sherri, it was, it was Lisa that had put that article in the paper. I did not know ahead of time. When Sherri came into the office, we did, she did come in and want to know. I explained it to her. I told her, "All the trustees know that when they want information, all there was, was a note on there for her to call Sean." Sean didn't particularly want to call that. And I said, "Well, I don't know what she wants, but she knows she has to go through the supervisor's office. It has to go through Dan." So that's what I had told her. And yes, I did, I let Dan know. He had called about something else. And I said, "Hey, Dan, if you see Sherri, just remind her that she needs, if she wants information, she just needs to go through you." So that's how that happened.
I, yeah. Boy, the stories just keep going.
Yeah.
And changing.
No, that hasn't changed, Sherri.
Yes, it has.
And actually, not only did that story not change, I will say this, though, this is a positive for trustee Frazier. After the letter was sent out, she did improve. I have not had a single complaint from an employee since that date. Um, so she has improved with the employees. The, um, I also did not know about that article, and it was, it's right there on the tape where I said I didn't know before she stated what she stated. Just trustee Miller.
Regarding trustee Frazier has committed aggressive unwanted physical contact, pushing, shoving against another elected official. I have to say that I was there that evening. Her arm went out. She pushed me. Wasn't done in malice. I, I gave that statement to Lieutenant Bazey. So I didn't see this occur. Not that it didn't, but I didn't see it occur. There was four people that supposedly were in the room, but I didn't see it occur. And as far as the quote from the Independent of March eighth, that was not my account of this either. So I, I, just because it's written doesn't mean it's accurate. I want to make that point.
Who was that trustee? Can I see that article?
Sure.
Ivan's, I have Google.
I was most quoted, so.
No, it says Frazier said, Frazier.
I, I understand that part.
This was a quote by Frazier. This, Frazier said Wright was walking in from her and stopped abruptly and turned. It was right in her face. She pushed him, his shoulder to get, get him back.
Said she said that.
She pushed him, yeah, it says that trustee Frazier said that.
Right, exactly.
Okay. So.
My point is that we can't accuse her of, of wrongdoing based on an article. I did not hear her say that she said that. I, I also heard her say that she was misquoted. So I just want to bring that point up because when you have, when it gets down to brass tacks, it's, he said, she said on that. So I can't agree with the, she committed aggressive unwanted physical contact.
Okay, is there anybody else that feels that way?
On that point.
On that one point?
On that one point. The rest, I, I stand firm, and I also, I would like to add one more thing, if I could.
Just to White. Yes, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
If I can add one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
What?
This has been a very hard two weeks, like I stated before. We're here to listen to all our residents, hear all the comments before we, we make a decision. But I have to add that it's not normal for an individual to walk into a department store and shoplift. This isn't like her. This just isn't right. I reached out to Ms. Frazier, and I, I asked her to take a leave of absence, to step down, to get this sorted out, to get the help that she needs, because this is not like her. And I just want to say that in all fairness to her. Thank you.
Trustee White.
As, as everyone can see, that's a small door there. And most of the time when this board adjourns, you have five or six people wanting to go through that door. And they brush shoulders frequently. And I don't think that anybody pushes or shoves or whatever. Even walking down this hallway, it's the same way. Uh, I also have an issue with Clerk Wright waiting twenty or twenty-one days to file a statement against trustee Frazier. And then, and in my opinion, that allows a CCH to be conducted when he files a complaint like that. And then, and then again, in ten or twelve days, he, he just drops it and says he doesn't want to pursue it. And, and I have issues with that. And as I have stated before, there is absolutely nothing in this policy that is listed as a penalty for any conduct unbecoming of an elected official. There's nothing there. It says the board shall determine. Well, I'm gonna say, you know, just buy Sherri a steak dinner. You know? No, I really wouldn't say that, but that's, that's how this is gonna be determined. What is appropriate? How are we to judge what is appropriate? This policy, I think, is from two thousand and six or something, or even earlier.
Are you suggesting that the board shouldn't find these actions inappropriate?
I'm suggesting that this board is premature in its actions because this was predicated by the allegation of the Macy's problem. And therefore, this board should wait until that is taken care of, and then we want to bring something forward. But how are we going to decide a penalty? Because you've got seven people, six.
That would be the next section.
Okay, but there's six people here that are going to decide the penalty.
Correct.
And you're gonna have six different decisions on who wants what and how it's gonna be done.
Work that out at that time. We'll work that out at that time, one step at a time. Okay, and besides, the public's gonna be all the way in on the penalty section because it's actually not gonna take effect until the next meeting. So does anybody else have a problem? Trustee Martin.
In light of all the, the conversation I've heard this evening, I, I think that trustee Frazier should be allowed to speak on each and every charge that has been brought against her today. The fact that she has a, a case, and her attorneys has advised her not to speak on it, I think that, since we have packaged these all four together, I think if we cannot discuss all of them, that we should not discuss any of them for now. And they should be put off until she can speak and defend herself freely of, of all these matters.
I guess I have to ask you if you, if you, you real, you may not realize the intent that I was going through here. The first, the first charge was aggressive or unwanted physical contact. If there are not three, if there are three trustees that are not going to vote in the affirmative of that, I would unbundle that. So the question is, do, what do you, so.
How are you gonna put those in order? I mean, it, you, you can't, you can't do it that way.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
I don't think so. I don't think that's right.
I could either have four separate votes, or I could have one vote with all of them and get it done with. But on the other side of it is, if there's not support for the physical contact one or the, the retail fraud, uh, then that one can, that one should be removed. Trustee Miller's made it clear that she believes that all, the second, third, and fourth. I will state openly that I believe one, two, three, and four should be, should go to the penalty base.
I don't think we should, through the chair. I, I'm sorry, I, as I stated, I didn't see that push.
Okay, that's okay.
So I can't agree to that.
I, I don't ever fault anybody for voting against me. It's fine. That doesn't matter.
It's not that it didn't happen, I didn't see it.
Because you're not voting against me, you're just voting whatever you, we vote. It's good.
I'd like to, I'd like to reiterate one more time that because I made a report of violence in the workplace, we have a policy that's called Violence in a Workplace. And you say you have an issue with me waiting twenty days. I waited twenty days because our human resource director was on, was out on Nutica. And I spoke with her before I went and spoke with the police department. And also, I was given, like I said earlier, I was giving trustee Frazier opportunity to have a conversation with me or maybe apologize. But yes, I wanted to document it. My intent was to document what had happened in regards to violence in the workplace. I reiterate, this was never meant to, I never, we have a policing department in here and now. We never directed this to go criminal. I didn't file a criminal assault. I filed a report in regards to our violence in the workplace policy. That triggered the ethic policy report.
Excuse me one second.
Okay.
Please, could you guys, there's no talking anymore out here.
You are talking while I'm talking. Violence in.
No more talking.
Violence in the workplace, our violence in the workplace policy is, is no tolerance.
Excuse me. Hey.
That's his wife.
Janice.
Who?
Janice. Janice. You're not.
John hasn't shut up the whole meeting back here. We can't hear what's going on because John's doing a dialogue here. No, it's not too bad. You have to be quiet. The rest of us want to hear what's going on.
Seriously, Janice.
Wait a minute.
All right, I'm, all right, I'm gonna, all right, if you guys can't settle down, I'm, I'm officer, not just yet, but be ready. Let's continue.
So as I was saying, violence, violence, our violence in the workplace policy has, is, is, is a serious policy. There's no tolerance. Basically, no tolerance mean that if, if, if an incident is happening, you have the right to report it. And it should be reported because if it doesn't be reported, then nothing is happening. This is why we have issues in our school in regard to bullying. This is why we have issues. That's why you see issues that arise is because no one wants to step up and say something is happening. If you have an issue, it needs to be documented. And that's why I documented it. When I documented, when I had this documented, it wasn't, it's not my fault that other things came up. I had no idea that other things regarding trustee Frazier was happening. That wasn't my intent. I had no idea, idea there. But it happened. The supervisor advised me of it. I was shocked, just like everyone else were. But it happened.
Keep talking.
You know? For some reason, this is escalated towards me way in regards to what happened. And I, I'm following the policies, which I've always followed a policy, which are, we obviously don't want, we have, not everyone is reading the policy that's given to them.
The policy doesn't call for you to pay for your wife's food on the Van Buren Township credit card.
Unless it reimburses, it's, it's.
Four months later, it should be reimbursed immediately upon the turn in.
Nothing was reimbursed four months later.
This is actually, you're out of this section. You're, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Could you wrap that up?
Nothing will reimburse four months later. It's no different than you and Paul White going and charging them credit cards.
Okay, no, 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 we're not going down that road.
It's the same thing.
Trustee Martin.
But it's the same thing.
We have four, we have four issues here. The first issue is the only one that looks like it may not pass unless, unless, without your support.
Well, the, the retail fraud, I think that should be, that should not be on there because you're gonna have to speak freely on it.
Okay, what, anything else? And what about the, uh, physical contact?
Um, I'm gonna have to say no on that also.
All right. Apparently, uh, items two, three, and four are the only ones that would be moving, uh, will be moving forward for a, a motion. Due to the fact that I actually have the power to make motions, and I've never made one, I'm just going to make it. I hereby make a motion that the board find that the trustee Frazier has violated the township's ethnic policy and, and, no, ethics policy. By, by one, engaging in conduct on December 31st, 2017, that led to her being charged with retail fraud in the city of Taylor. Two, failing to notify the supervisor of the events of December 31st, 2017. And three, repeatedly and dishonestly taking credit at the March 6th, 2018 board meeting for the creation and placement of a favorable township in the spotlight article related to the township in the March 2018 edition of Michigan Township Focus, the official publication. Can I get a second? I have support from Clerk Wright. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Yes, please read those again, please.
Engaging in conduct on December 31st, 2017, that led to her being charged with retail fraud in the city of Taylor. Failing to notify the supervisor of the events of December 31st, 2017. And repeatedly and dishonestly taking credit at the March 6th, 2018 board meeting for the creation and placement of a favorable township in the spotlight article related to the township in the March 2018 edition of the Michigan Township Focus, the official publication. Is there any questions? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee White?
No. And I'd like to explain my vote.
No. You, you can, and then read the paper like always.
Trustee Martin?
No.
Trustee Frazier? Oh, she can't vote. Trustee, trustee Butt?
Yes.
Clerk White, yes. Supervisor McNair?
Yes. Thank you. We are now into the penalty phase of the, of this. I am going to have to go to my notes here. There are not a lot of penalties. Okay. Um, basically, the, um, okay. The ethics policy provides, uh, provides penalties for violation of it and other township policies by public officials, including all officials and employees are expected to follow this policy. Failure to do so by any elected official will result in an evaluation by the township board of trustees and could result in the removal of the official if the board decides that it is appropriate, unless state law specifies otherwise. It's very clear that state law specifies otherwise, and you cannot be removed. This section does not eliminate the possibility of criminal or civil charges being filed in the circumstances of one section. They do not. The appropriate action to be taken in any case shall, shall be at the discretion of the controlling authority. It can include the following: referral of the matter to a higher authority, which would be the governor, to request or she be removed. Pursuing further investigation, I don't think that's necessary. Taking appropriate disciplinary action, including discharge, we're not allowed to. Deeming no action, that no action is required at all by, by this board. And the next one is pursuing such other action which is reasonable, just, and appropriate under the circumstances. I can tell you that there are a few things that we can do. They are minor. First of all, we can censure her formally through a resolution. Secondly, we can make a statement that trustee Frazier off this board does not involvement and membership in any non-governmental township organization that she will not represent, be a representative of, a spokesperson of, or be authorized by the township of Van Buren or its board of trustees to speak on their behalf off this board. Her participation in any organizations is strictly on her personal, individual volunteer capacity. She has no authority to speak on behalf of this township. We also have the ability to state to, um, remove her from any other boards that we place her on, or the supervisor does. That would be exclusively the water and sewer board that I know of, that she sits on. In addition, state law does not require that the supervisor's office or the board of trustees approve any travel or seminar expenses. In this instance, she is currently set up to travel to the Michigan Township Association's training seminar next week. I, uh, this would be something you would have to take a vote on today to stop, because she leaves Monday. And those are the three things that I know of that we can do. Does anybody have any comments? We will be going to a public comment period. And then at that time, you know, if anybody wants to weigh in, they're welcome to.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Well.
I'd like to make a comment, if that's appropriate. No travel, so what you're doing in that situation is you're denying her training that is essential for all trustees and all elected officials to be knowledgeable to perform their job. So you're saying, you know, you can sit there as a trustee, but you're not going to get training so that you can't advance your thoughts, your ideas to the board, because you don't have a proper training. I, I think that's not fair.
Okay, I'm going to be blunt on this one.
Okay.
She put an art, she took credit for taking, putting an article in the Michigan Township Association. Their convention is next week. She never took personal responsibility for the, the Macy's event, the shoplifting. I'm going to finish this thought process. The community is in an uproar. I can't go anywhere. We can't get anything done in this township. We've got people coming through the, through the woodwork coming. Emails, phone calls, people dropping in. She doesn't realize the embarrassment it has on the community. I'm not going to be, I'm not going to a Michigan Township Association seminar and having the Van Buren Township trustee not realize what embarrassment she's put on. Everybody's going to talk about it up there. It's going to be the talk of the convention. And I don't want them pointing over and saying, there she is. That's even worse embarrassment than we allow her to travel after all this.
So you're saying it's a distraction?
It is a distraction. It's been a distraction since it came out.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I, I think your punitive alternatives are restrictive in her, doing her job as a trustee. I, I don't, I think that we should leave it as it is and move forward. Become a cohesive board, and let's try to, to work together on whatever issues that we have.
Since we're in the penalty phase, I'm going to say this. We tried that numerous times. I'm also going to say this about Adam Bird, because I really got angry when I heard what you said today. Somebody called the state police and accused Adam Bird of running an illegal criminal history report on somebody. You sparked an investigation.
It's not me.
You, you alluded to it.
It wasn't me. I, it was not me who called the Michigan State Police.
At any rate, he was exonerated of it. He was exonerated of it.
It wasn't me.
Okay.
So let's get our facts straight.
All right, I'm glad you were here.
Before you throw me under the bus again.
You said it earlier.
I did not say that.
You said he was running illegal.
You're, you're totally.
At any rate, I, um, I think that we are almost toothless in what we can do for breaking these policies. And there's only one or two things we can do. We can stop the expense account, and we can say she's not sitting on other boards. Now, that would be, I would love to see some progress. Or you're, or you.
I'd like to make a statement then.
You know what?
Let her, let her.
Because I'd love it. Go ahead.
Okay, fellow board members, the audience, and members of people at home, I regret that I find myself in this situation that embarrassed my family, my friends, and the township. My dad always taught us that an apology takes courage. It is never easy to admit you may have done something embarrassing or dishonest. Others at this table may view it as a sign of weakness in my character, when actually, it requires great strength to restore damage to a relationship, whether it's personal or public. It shows my vulnerability. I feel I have to get ahead of this situation. And people that sit on this table are willing to use blackmail to get me to go along, even though I have legitimate questions and concerns. With that said, I was fully intending to let the supervisor know after I had my day in court, upon the advice of my attorney. The offense I am accused of does not represent who I am or what I was brought up to be. I have dedicated my life to serving in education in the community. The offense, um, I'm sorry. I've learned a valuable lesson. It's not how we make mistakes, but how we correct them that defines us. We have to get back up as hard as it is. We have to step up to the plate, own up to it, learn from it, and move forward. I still believe mistakes are forgivable if one has the courage to admit them. When you make a mistake, own up to it, take responsibility. My mom always taught us tough things happen. Rise above it. How we use our lives, not just for one day or one week, but over a lifetime, is really what matters. We assume that making a mistake means I'm a bad person. I feel ashamed and take it very seriously. I feel if I fail to apologize, resentment will build, not only personally, but in the workplace. No one wants to feel ashamed. It puts you on the defensive. So all I can do is apologize and say I'm sorry for any mistakes at this time, because I have not had my day in court. I cannot comment further. I understand what happened. I have sought counseling, and I truly understand how hurtful it was to others and to the citizens of Van Buren Township. I fully intend to try and fix the situation by understanding the cause, and I have made amends. As my pastor told me, it takes a big person, Sherry, to own up to being wrong. But God has forgiven me because I asked him. And now I am asking my fellow board members and the community to forgive me. I am truly sorry. That's all I can say. There is no minimizing it, shifting blame, no defense. It's as easy and as hard as that. It's important to me not to let people down when they are depending on me. I humbly ask your forgiveness. I hope my mistake will not prevent you from giving me a chance to rebuild your trust and the community's trust. My goal is to move forward. I want to work to improve relationships. I hope my future actions will show my commitment to improve. I haven't come this far by running the other way. I will work tirelessly with commitment and determination to ensure that Van Buren Township will be the best community to raise a family in and do business in. Early in my career, I was a librarian in, in elementary school. And I, one of my favorite books was the Bernstein Bear Book and Mama Bear. And I would say this to the kids. It's never too late to correct a mistake. We all make them. And I want to recall Bruce Springsteen's story after the 2016 election, where he questioned himself. Could I have made a difference? Did I do everything I could have done? By quitting, I would always think my inaction would say, maybe I could have made a difference, but I quit. I believe I made a difference before in this community. And I want to keep trying. I am committed to doing my part to serve my community and helping make a difference. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Yeah, would you like a recess? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Good idea. Thank you. Back in session right now? Okay. Um, at this point in time, we're in the, still in the penalty phase. My statement and most of the statements we've heard here, I mentioned that the trustee had not, had she, we have, three, four weeks ago, we just said apologize to the community, accept personal responsibility, and get some help. We've just had an apology to the community, and the trustee stated that she is getting counseling and getting some help. That's really all we really wanted out of this. So going for a further penalty phase would seem like, as one person put it, piling on. I'm not putting it off forever, though. We're going to, we are going to put it off to, um, to after the trial for that point. Although. Yes? We would put that off after the trial. But I, I would like to still sponsor a motion that the trustee not attend the MTA conference next week. And I'm going to make that motion, unless anybody else has a comment before I do that.
Even if I pay myself?
Actually, I can't stop you if you pay yourself. I can only stop the, I can only stop your expenses.
Is that legal?
Yes, the expense part, yes. And we've checked out through legal. All power that is vested in the state of Michigan out of your position has been protected. The only pow, but powers that are vested from this board can be taken away. And that would be an expense account. So I am making a motion that the expense account for the Michigan Township Association sponsoring Sherry Frazier to the MTA conference be revoked for this, for this year. Uh, that's my motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I have, I have a comment.
All right.
It sounded like nobody wanted a second. I have a comment. Okay, we, it really makes no, it really makes no sense to make a motion to not pay for her to go to MTA when she's saying that she, can she pay for it, if somebody can sponsor it, if she's going on. So it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything. She's still going to be there. So that really don't, has no validity, because whether she going on or whatever, she still will be at the MTA. And this whole, this, this hearing was to validate whether or not the ethnic policy has been violated. And it sounds like no one, it sounds like we have some split decision, well, I ain't going to say split decision, but we have a split board. We have three people that thinks that nothing is happening, and we have four that say yes. The intent to have a meeting whether we, something's been violated. The intent to have a meeting whether we, something's been violated, it's because the intent has been done. Like I said before, we had, we're not having a trial here. We just, it's been, the intent has been done. No one is here to try to cause harm on anyone. I've always stated over and over again, we shot Olive Branch from day one. Let's sit down, let's have a conversation, let's talk. Anything you don't understand, let's talk about it. I initiated the, with Supervisor McNamara. Let's have, let's have a mediation with the board so we can see what we need to do to try to iron out our differences. That didn't happen. That happened, but it didn't work. Continuance, thing continuing to happen. My only statement is that I don't have any issue with trustee Frazier going to MTA, but if you're going to go to the MTA, sit down in the classes, listen to what the MTA is teaching, and come back and put them into, and put them into place. The MTA teaches townships, townships in big and small, new board members and current board members, how to interact with each other, how to carry yourself on day to day. It's a, it's a way to do everything, it's a wrong way to do anything. Uh, these, these, I keep continuing to say, these continuous accusations and accusatory statements of things that, that's, that's simply is not true. It's, it's not recommended, and it shouldn't be allowed, and we need to do something. This, this is just one step. I mean, can't just pass the ordinance to make themselves more accountable as a board. Think, we need to think about something ourselves because it's how we treat each other. If we can't treat each other right as a board, how are we going to treat our constituents? And the leadership starts up here, seven board members. And if you can't, we can't treat each other with respect and dignity, how are we going to treat our constituents with respect and dignity? That's where it starts at. This is leadership. I have nothing against no one on this board, no one. And I've been through probably more than anyone on this board as an elected official, other than maybe one. But I love the township I live in, and I'm still committed to make it a better place to live, not only myself, my family, but my constituents. I try to get along with everyone. I'm always open. I always try to care, carry myself in a friendly atmosphere. And anyone that know me, they know that's true. Um, I'm always open for conversation. I'm always open for questions. As long as they're, I say again, as long as they're presented to me in a respectful and manner and not accusatory. Anyone, if you, if you bag a dog into a corner, it could be the best dog you, there, there is in the, in the community. But if you bagged into a corner and he don't see his way out, he's going to fight. So you, that, that's any, that's, that's where you got anyone. If you bag him into a corner, he's going to fight. And if you have no other choice but to represent yourself in the eyes of your beholder when you have someone accusing you of certain things, I, I take your challenge. I'd like to see this board work, get along and work together. But I, of course, I mean, give me suggestions. I'm open for suggestions. I've done, I've made all of my suggestions on how we can do it. It's always the cat calls, the I got you moments. Uh, wait until a board, wait until the camera start rolling us down and ask questions that you know you could have asked yesterday or you could have asked two days ago. It's always trying to make someone feel like they're in, in the eyes of our constituents, like someone has done something wrong when you know they're not. You don't know the policies when you know you do. You just stated, everyone up here is very, is smart individuals. Everybody has a career in either education or some form of another, that they know how to carry themselves and that consider them as intelligent, smart people with years of service, years of, of, uh, of, uh, public office. There's no reason for us to continue with these I got you moments and, and these, and these accusations that can't be conducted in a professional manner. So I challenge the board. We need to come, and we're not going to move forward tonight. We need to come together and put together a comprehensive board policy for how we should act as a board in respect to each other and how we assess each other in going forward. I think that's one of the things that we probably should look at because if we can't, like I emphasize again, if we can't get along, then how we expect the, the community to get along? They're looking at, watching us, just like our kids watch you as you grow. Uh, I, I agree trustee Frazier. Everybody's tired of making mistakes. Public office is a, it's a, it's a hard thing to do because if you, if you're in the eyes of your constituent, everything you do is in the eye. You drive down this Bellville Road, you get accused of cutting someone off because you're elected official. I've heard that, seen that. You're not thinking about what you're doing, but sometimes you're in the eyes of the, you're always in the eyes of your constituent, and everybody's watching you. You can't go to, we can't, you can't go to lunch, you can't go to dinner as a board because everybody think you're having, it's a conflict of interest, and you're having a meeting when you're not having a meeting. You could be talking about the ballgame. But it's, in the eyes of the beholders, it's not what you do is what it, what it looks like you're doing. So I've always been the person that says I'm too soft, and I'm always, but I've always believed in second chances. And I've seen, I've been in my career, unfortunately, I've had to say no to people that do things that people think they shouldn't do. And we're elected officials, we get to do, we do things, and it should be some type of sense of, I mean, we've, we've, we've had a hearing, we've specified that we think the ethnic policy has been violated. To take anything else away could be considered piling on. But I would, I would challenge trustee Frazier, so let's, so let's get together and let's talk. I think if anyone watched 60 Minutes the last week, they had a gentleman on there was talking about growing as, not only as a community, but growing as a country. Without conversation, we'll never grow. If you don't sit down and get to know the person that's sitting beside you or living beside you, you, you won't grow. You won't, either because you don't know, all you do is make accusations. And without communication, which we can't grow. We still need to talk, we need to communicate. What we don't know, you won't know until we communicate with each other. You don't know nothing about me if you don't ask me. And I don't know nothing about you if I don't ask you. So I, yeah, I challenge the board. If you, if we want to get along and we want to move forward, we need to challenge ourselves and put policies in place to make us a better board so we can lead the community better and commit to stop these cat calls and accusations. And if you, after proper communication, if you find somebody doing something right, wrong, I'll be the first one to be right there with you saying, yeah, it's wrong. But the TV chime, the board of trustees, Tuesday, Tuesday night at 7:00 PM, is not the time to bring forth something that nobody's heard of prior when we have work studies.
Well, sir.
Thanks.
Um, it looks like my...
Well, I'm going to talk.
Am I leaving my motion out there or not?
Well, I'm...
Okay, go ahead, talk. Sorry.
I agree that trustee Frazier violated the policy, but I, I think she should be able to go to MTA conference and take the classes and better herself in that position. And, and to take that away from her takes away from this board in the end. So, that being said, I encourage her to keep continuing her education.
I will withdraw my motion for lack of support, although I believe, I believe that no penalty is not justified here. So, but I will leave it alone. Go ahead, trustee White.
I commend clerk Wright for his comments, and I think he did an outstanding job there as to how the board functions. However, as individuals, we never ever, as elected officials, put ourselves into a position to be challenged like that. We all know the rules, we all know the regulations, and we all know how to keep ourselves out of trouble, and we should try to follow that policy. Nothing I would like better than to see seven oh votes on this board on the majority of the votes because I think, I think that would show that we all have a clear understanding of what we should do. But to prevent gotchas, then you got to make sure that you don't put yourself into a situation to get, to get a gotcha. Most of the people on this board, I can see, uh, four of us have jobs, and we serve on this board because we want to serve our residents and our community. We are here to make the best decisions on how we spend our money appropriately to benefit the majority of our residents. That's, that's what we're here for, to give our residents, you know, public safety, uh, water, sewer, police, fire, and everything that is necessary for them to, to live in, in a good community. We're always talking about a premier community, and we are getting there. Uh, it's, it's a struggle, but we will get there. And to get there, this board should be united. However, it's, it's not uncommon to have four, three, or five, two votes in many communities. I've attended a couple of other board meetings, you know, up in the northern lower there. Same issue, same problem, same, same issues out in Windaway County. It is really hard to get five people in a general township or seven in a charter township to agree all the time on everything. It, it's just not going to happen. But when we come to the important issues, if we have the proper information, every page of it, and it allows us to openly discuss it so we can make it a determination, then it, it should really help and benefit us and the community. And that's what it's all about. It's creating a good place in our Van Buren Township community till people enjoy living here. I've lived in, in the township for 57 years, and I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes. I was voted into office because I was active in coming to meetings about something that I didn't approve of, I didn't agree with. I was successful in helping to kill that off and also successful of being, being a supervisor for four years. Learning process, never held an elective office before. I mean, it was a learning process every 60 hours a week to learn and everything. And that, that information has been very, very beneficial as far as helping others into making decisions. And again, clerk, clerk Wright is correct. It should be our goal, and, and we've had, uh, seminars with Mike Cole on how we could achieve that. And, and we need to look to do that, but we need to protect ourselves and make sure that we cannot be challenged at a board meeting. So, uh, as far as the allegations against trustee Frazier, as I stated earlier, they're strictly allegations this time, and it's premature for us to do anything. I think this board would be lacking if they denied her educational opportunities because there are a lot of things that, that can be learned in going to these seminars and conferences if you apply yourself. Enough said.
Does anybody else wish to speak before we go into the public commentary?
So let me get clarification here. So are you asking to, uh, the penalty phase of this be...
The penalty phase was never scheduled for a vote today.
Okay.
It was a discussion item.
So we can do that at our next board meeting?
Well, no. Let me get, let me be straight about what we plan on doing here then. The penalty phase was a discussion item. The public was going to weigh in during the public comment. We were going to present a resolution outlining the censure and the penalty. At the next meeting, read it and vote on it. The board appears they want to wait on the penalty phase until after the trial date. That's what I'm getting from everybody. I, you don't.
No.
No.
You, you not get a second on your motion, so therefore, I think this is...
No, we're talking about something else now.
Okay.
No, no, she wants to, it sounds like she wants to move the penalty phase forward to what we originally planned on doing.
Not tonight, but maybe perhaps at our next meeting when we have time to think about this.
Well, the public, the public will...
I don't want to kick it out too far after we hear from the public.
Okay. My proposal was, you, you know I feel that there should be a penalty here. I think everybody knows that.
Right.
Sorry, trustee. I do. So, but I don't think I, I don't feel I have support. So at this point in time, why don't we go to public comment?
Okay.
See what they feel about it.
Great.
And we can figure out what we're going to do for the next meeting.
Agreed.
Right before, before we go to public comment, we just need to make sure that we, we all realize that the one thing that attorney did say, she is voted in with the party people, and she going to be taken out by the, by the people. So even though we, we voted that a violation has occurred of ethnic policy, we still, it's upon the people to do anything else. And that's why I think I would like to hear from the public, and I think trustee Frazier would like to hear from the public.
To be clear, you cannot be removed for this.
We know.
On a single item.
Right.
Exactly.
If it is a repetitive item, that is a different story. Okay, that's why you document these things.
Let's hear from the public.
We're opening now for public comment. Would you like to speak?
First of all, I would like to say, just because you had a kumbaya moment just now, what I did here is you're tying a noose around her neck, and you're dragging her around till next week, and then you're going to continue to drag her around until May, when it's adjudicated. And then you're going to make up some new rules because of this penalty phase may or may not have a conviction at a later date. And the whole thing is hogwash to begin with, and I started out that way. I want to be clear and caveat something. What you're using is Exhibit 10 in this policy manual, doesn't mean squat. Because I'm going to admit something right now, and I don't care how it works out. I am an appointed official in this township. I don't have to follow this manual either, just like an elected official. What I have to follow is the ethics policy only to the point where criminal law keeps me from doing my position on the LDFA. That's the same with all seven of you. And what I'm saying is, is until you straighten out our township and attorneys to square you away over the last 30 years of having this garbage, that you're saying that you're cutting and pasting elected officials, it only works for at-will, it only works for appointed officials and employees. And you're specifically stating that her violation, that she didn't come and tell you anything, is in Rule Number 12 as at-will employees. And it's for out-of-this-building work and that performance. And that's what you were supposed to do, supervisor, is to let the board know if that happened. You were never supposed to tell the board anything that happened under her CCH until after it was adjudicated. What it states in this manual is that an at-will employee has to tell you something. It says a appointed official, which I am, doesn't have to. So you need to get the thing straight. What you need to do is get a new policy that's going to give you no weight at all, but it's going to say elected officials instead of what was just superimposed in here in 2003 by clerk Payne and trustee Hart. Because it, all it is is cut and paste. And everything that you used tonight when you said she violated by not coming to you, that was for an appointed official, that was for a township at-will official, excuse me, a township employee at-will or out-of-the-building employment. So you guys are cutting and pasting allegations that don't fit. And when the violation you've claimed that she signed for this packet and she has to follow this packet is minutia because there's nothing in this packet that states that she has to do anything or that you have a penalty against her. You've already said that tonight in your kumbaya moment, and then you want to negate 9,909 votes by saying that you're not going to, you attempted, by saying you're not going to give her money to do her job that we voted her in on. Shame on you. So you had a kumbaya moment, but what you're doing is you're actually shoving her into that corner, as clerk Wright said, and seeing if she's going to come out fighting because you want to hold a noose over her until May, whenever it's adjudicated in Taylor. And then if it comes out, no charges. And it's funny, though, that nobody stated until it came up. And I went to your office and told you first that David Greco, the attorney for Taylor, is also the partner of McCully and Associates in our township. So, yeah, I'm going to finish up by saying there's a lot of garbage going on in here still, and the storm's still brewing. But now you just want to slide it down and actually blackmail her and hold her accountable on her pins and needles or on her toes until May. That's not how it works. You either get it done tonight... not how it works. You either get it done tonight, get it done next week, and that's it. Because she may sue the crap out of you anyway.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, board. I just have a couple of things to say. Um, Ms. Fraser, I, I, it's not that I do not care for you. We work diligently on the Milich Committee together. That's the only time I ever talk to you. I don't know you besides that, to be quite honest with you. Um, and to get it straight, I'm glad supervisor McNamara did point out that investigation was done, and I was exonerated from the charges. Lucky I'm the union president, so I could talk, um, to that standard. Out of respect for my employer, though, I will not talk about anything, um, other than that, police-related, because I do have respect for my employer, and I am not talking on behalf of a township employee. I hope, and supervisor McNamara, I mean, you did one heck of a job, as much of the other board members tonight, at trying to resolve the issue, get to the bottom of it. There does need to be a penalty. Um, if any employee, if any child steals in kindergarten, you can get put in the principal's office. You're going to get a, some level of discipline. You get older, you get suspended. You go to work, you get fired. Your elected employee, there's where the law provides that the people have to take this person and recall them if they deem necessary. That's not something that I wish to lead, as I've led many of campaigns within this township, as a resident of this township, because I care for my community. But I will say, wrong is wrong, and discipline at some point has to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Would there be anybody else that'd like to speak for the public comment period? Last one more time, does anybody else like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, can't... No, I looked down.
I just would like to ask the board, look into yourselves before you do anything. Like I said before, I'm not condoning, Sherri, I don't know anything about it. I don't, wouldn't want to be a judge. But every one of you, look into your lives before you do any kind of penalization, because I know for a fact some of you had something happen in your lifetime. And think about that before you do anything.
Doesn't anybody else wish to speak?
No.
No, I can admit it, man. You need to know the rules. It's not agenda at the end. I wrote those rules with Paul White, so...
Three minutes, how?
(inaudible)
Hold on.
Wait, 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 wait.
It's three and a minute and a half, and you know that.
You said you wrote what? You wrote them.
We worked on those when we saved your reading in the recall. Remember, we saved you in the recall.
I commend you for your speech up there.
Thank you. So I did help write that policy. It was used against me. Just like that clock, I was the one that ordered that clock for that gentleman up there. And tell him, Leon...
That clock that's running?
That clock that's running. Ask Leon where it came from.
Yes, you did, uh...
Okay. Okay. So, anyway, my minute and a half, my minute and a half now is that I would like to know, in so many years that we come up here, and public safety officials, police officers, come up here, and the minute they get in front of this mic, they say, "I'm not here as a police officer of Van Buren Township. What I'm here is, is a resident." I thought when, taking oath as a police officer, you're a police officer 24/7. And if you're a police officer 24/7 and we're paying for it, then I can, I'm tired of hearing, and it's not just Mr. Byrd, but I've heard at least 30 officers in the last 15 years come up here when they got a problem, and say, "I'm not here as a police officer badmouthing my employer, but what I'm here as is a resident." You can't split the hairs. You're going to be both of those. And so, that should be foul right there for a police officer that's 24/7, that's supposed to be hauled to a higher standard, to come to this podium and say, "I'm not here as a police officer, so I can do whatever I want to you right now, because I'm not a police officer." Those standards are standards all the time. So let's, let's be truthful here and not put the wool over our eyes and hide stuff, because I'm sick and tired of hearing that kind of things. It's not Adam Byrd only. It's most of the police officers drop the official tag when they want to come up here and talk as a resident. That doesn't work. That's an ethics policy violation right there.
Thank you. She, call ahead.
Carl McClanahan, Van Buren Township. Police officers have First Amendment rights. Mr. Delaney. I think it's time. I've worked in government for almost 30 years, and just as soon as you think it can't get any worse, it does. And it is my opinion that the board, you have a salary-to-employee handbook. You need a board policy handbook, and you also need to tighten up your ethics ordinance. Now, you guys are going to the MTA meeting next week. That's an excellent opportunity to, to meet with other township officials, see if they have an ordinance, or have your attorney put one together. But it needs to be tight. This one is not. Um, I mean, and it's, it's, because the ethics, uh, uh, policy is, is so loose, it brings about everybody's opinion, and you don't really have a track to run on. I think you need to tighten up that ethics policy.
Thank you. That will be very well put. Okay. Mr. Byrd, you have one and a half minutes, I'm told.
Just, yeah, add one. Um, just one thing, because I want to clear this up for the public. Um, I think Mr. Delaney doesn't understand at all the, um, what, no, 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 no. What, it's, it's not, sir. It's to explain to you, and the rest of the public and the community is watching. When we come up here, we could talk in different capacities. If I'm talking on behalf of the law enforcement agency, and therefore I need authorization from the director of public safety to do so. Um, if I'm talking as a union president, I don't need the director of public safety, but I'm representing my union. And if I'm talking as a resident, I have certain rights that allow me to do certain things and be able to talk freely, where I'm not limited in restriction. And the public needs to know that, because it's not fair to say we can't identify ourselves. We have to speak on the position that we're speaking about. As a matter of fact, it's in our standard operating procedures. Um, so therefore, I just want to be clear, so the public understands, so the audience understands, and so the board understands, that I don't do that just because I want to stipulate my position in life. I'm doing that because I'm restricted depending on what hat I'm wearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are finishing up on the non-agenda items public comment. Does anybody here at the board table that wishes to speak?
I do.
Trustee Miller.
So, regarding the violation of code of conduct, I'm not in favor of waiting until May for the outcome of this. We all spoke tonight, and to drag this along is unfair, it's unfair to the community, it's unfair to this board. So I would like to see this placed on our next agenda, where we have, you know, we have two weeks to think about it, discuss it, and move forward. I'm not in favor of waiting until May.
What part would you like to have... Okay, I'll tell you what. We will have this discussion for the MTA rules of how we would bring it forward. But I mean, right now, we have a, we have found that she is in violation of...
Exactly. So why wait until May? I don't understand that.
Because there was a lack of support to put a penalty phase in, if I can put that through. But I don't know that that's true.
I disagree.
Through the chair, but that's, that's two separate issues. It was a lack of support to put a penalty phase through. But I think we agree, we voted on whether about, there's been a violation of the ethnic policy.
Okay, so you want, you want me to put together a...
I think that's totally, that's totally different.
Resolution and a penalty. In effect, and a penalty.
I said that's different from the penalty. I think you need to put together a resolution in the fact that a vote was taken that, and agreed upon, there's been a violation of the ethnic policy.
True.
I think you, you lost support in regards to penalty phase.
I did.
Because I, I agree with trustee Miller that I don't think this has anything to do with the day in court. We're, I, I'm not a, I'm not a law enforcement officer. I'm not here to prosecute anyone. This is regarding our township ethnic policy. I agree with Mr. McClanahan. I've stated that earlier, it definitely needs to be addressed. We need to put something tighter together, maybe look at an ordinance. Can just put one together. We probably can take a look at it. Now, the last thing I would like to do as elected official, I always like to reach out on all the branch. There was no support for my allegations of, for allegation of violence in the workplace. I respect your statement, trustee Fraser, that an apology you made to the community. All I would ask to going forward, I would ask for an apology of that incident, if it wasn't, if it wasn't something that was meant for. All I ask is an apology. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Trust, treasure, treasure butt.
I agree with trustee Miller. I don't think we should wait. I think the penalty should come along with the, a resolution that, um, ethics policy, and we should state the penalties.
Trustee, supervisor McNamara, we approved the, uh, resolution, first resolution, but there was no support for a penalty. It is double jeopardy for us to bring back, bring that back again. So I agree with the resolution on, on the violation.
You don't know what double jeopardy is.
But, but, but double jeopardy is because, look, it was brought forth to the board, you did not get a second. It's, it's over and it's done with the penalty phase.
I just...
No, no. It wasn't a penalty phase, it was one thing, Michigan Township Association.
Okay, okay, but that was a penalty.
And that's over and done with.
No, that was a penalty that, that you proposed for her.
Yes.
Now, now you want to come back two weeks from now, or a month from now, and, and present another penalty? No, that's, that's improper. It's double jeopardy.
That was the penalty that he brought forth to have before, to, to travel, before next week.
That's correct, but that's the only penalty brought forward.
I was very clear that the penalty section should, will wait until after the, uh, until after the trial. Of course, the, the board always over, over, overrules me. I, I serve at your pleasure here.
Okay, but, but, but that's the penalty that you brought forward? You did not get a second on it. So the penalty phase should be over and done with.
I, I disagree with what was discussed. One, I don't want to, one, I don't think we should wait until May. The court proceedings have, have nothing to do with, with what we're doing here. We're not going by court proceedings. We're not going by double jeopardy. No. She was found in violation. She deserves to hear what her penalty is, and the board should move accordingly. We shouldn't hold, like John Delaney said, a noose around her neck either. It's not right. But there are consequences for your actions, and we should be moving forward on that, not dismissing them until a court date.
I invite the board to send me an email on what they feel that is proper. Ms. Fraser, you're welcome to send an email if you want to...
Well, I would like clarification now regarding the violations that I committed, because we've ruled out the, um, incident regarding the, with clerk Wright, because the case has been dropped. Uh, we ruled, I apologized about taking the credit the next morning at 7:30, and I didn't, and I didn't have a chance to read my apology, but I did so at another meeting. So that should be, you know, I apologize.
It was already voted on. It was already voted on.
Well, if you don't like me, supervisor, just get it out, that you want to, you want to be punitive and, you know, you just had...
I can't take back a board vote. The board voted.
You misled the vote.
Supervisor. I can't take back board votes.
I, I understand about the resolution that she violated the, um, ethics policy. However, the only charge that you brought forth was the, uh, taking away her right to go to the conference. And...
That was the only one I thought that we should do right now.
Okay, okay. No, 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 that's...
No, no, that's what he said, right now.
Okay.
Right.
And I believe, I believe that there should be a penalty for breaking this ordinance. I'm not going to go any further into this. I, I, um, does anybody else have anything to say? Because that's not on that subject, because we're going round and round on that.
Okay, but I understand that, but what happens...
I'm not going to hear about double jeopardy or whatever you want to call it.
Well, it is, because if you don't get it the next time, you're going to come forth with it the next meeting. And this needs to be over and done with.
I wanted it over and done with three weeks ago, sir.
Well, so did I.
Okay, I, I apologized.
Yes, you did.
I, uh, said I want to move forward.
Thank you.
And yet, I'm still, I still feel like we haven't resolved the issue. So resentment is still going to continue. You know, I, I see it still continuing, rather than to put this behind us and try to move forward and work as a team. You know, you saying that I shouldn't be on the Water and Sewer Commission, I was appointed. I don't think it's...
I appointed you.
Yeah. I don't think you can just stop an appointment.
I can.
Okay. That's vindictive, then.
But I'm not doing that to you, because the board has asked me not to at this point.
Oh.
Through the chair.
Yes.
No decisions should be made tonight at 10 o'clock, from this point on. I say we, we postpone the penalty phase of this until our next board meeting, and we'll take it up then. But that's what MTA teaches us.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay.
Then would it be over?
Yes, this meeting would be over.
Until the next meeting. The meeting would be over.
Hearing no further public comments for non-agenda items. A call for adjournment. Motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Miller, support by, uh, Mr. Martin, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We are adjourned.